Calt ordered the March 6 meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I'd ask that you join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the high states of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
This time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. We're happy to have contractual attorney John Silverstein with us this evening. He'll be with us for all of our quasi judicial council meetings throughout the year.
We apologize in advance.
Our first quasi judicial public hearing is for First United Methodist Church Special Use and Development. An overview of the hearing procedures and detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who want to speak during this public hearing must be administered an oath by the town clerk's administrative assistant. And we'll pause just a moment to allow those individuals who want to speak at the public hearing to approach the town clerk, administrative assistant, to my right, to your left, and receive their oath. And while that is going on, I'm going to ask council members if they've had any site visits, ex parte communications, financial relationships, specialized knowledge, or close relationships to an affected person to disclose. I'll start on my left, Mr. Yerha.
There was an email that I received, I saw it this morning, I guess it came last night. And I'm looking through my emails and not looking at the title, and I did open it. Read the first line, said, "I shouldn't be doing this." And I quick looked around to make sure the quasi judicial police were not looking at me. I closed it. I don't know whether the email was even pro or con.
And so you're saying it would not impact your...
It's not certainly, in no way.
Okay.
I did the same thing Mr. Yerha did.
Would it impact yours?
It would not.
Ms. France.
I didn't get the email, so...
Any other things to disclose?
I drive by it every day.
Okay.
But it will not impact my decision.
I saw the email, did not open it, so it will not impact me whatsoever.
I saw the email, opened it, ignored it.
Okay.
No, nothing here.
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay, very good. Based on disclosures heard from the council members, I invite, I would invite anyone to the podium who has been sworn in to speak. If you have an objection to council members participating in this hearing, and maybe I should wait till after the... I thought everybody's sworn in, but I guess not. I'll repeat that once everybody's sworn in. Now that everybody's been sworn in, I'll once again ask if there's anyone that has been sworn in who would object to council members' participation in this hearing. And so I'd ask that you come to the podium now. Seeing no one, we'll continue, and I'll open the quasi judicial public hearing and ask Mr. Hales of our staff to introduce this hearing. Mr. Hales.
Good evening, council. As you've indicated, the first two items on tonight's agenda are a special use and site plan, requests for development of a accessory columbarium use associated with First United Methodist Church of Cary located in downtown Cary, downtown Cary, yeah. Because it is associated with a religious assembly use and is located in the high intensity mixed use sub-district of the Town Center zoning district, it is required to get a special use approval for Town Council based on the land use plan. Project site is approximately three acres in size. It's associated with the parking lot that First United Methodist built several years ago, the corner of Waldo and South Walker Streets. The church owns the length of property on the north side of Waldo Street across the street from the site in question. Residential uses surround the site on the south and across South Walker Street to the east. The U.S. Post Office and a former residence which is now converted to office uses are located to the west of the site. And there's a small notch in the property, as you can see, that is filled in with parking, both associated with the Post Office and Ashworth Village. One, South Academy Street is a minor thoroughfare identified in the thoroughfare, comprehensive transportation plan, as is South Walker Street. And Waldo across this property's frontage is a one-way local street headed eastbound away from South Academy. Parks, Recreation and Cultural Resources Master Plan does not identify any impacts to this site directly. However, it is in close proximity to a proposed street-side trail that runs along the western side of South Academy Street, and also in close proximity to another street-side trail which runs along the southern side of East Chatham, East and West Chatham, in fact. Property is not impacted or located on any immediate transit routes wherever it is in close walking distance of the train depot where it serves as the transit hub for Cary in downtown area. There are no stream buffers or floodplain impacting this site. As I mentioned before, the land use plan has a lot to do with this case, and while we're here tonight, and in the Town Center zoning district, the land use plan designation and the zoning sub-district are identical. In this case, that would be high intensity mixed use. Just an excerpt from the plan dealing with uses in the high intensity mixed use, "It's intended for uses or mix of uses residential and non-residential, particularly those that add to the vibrancy in the downtown and create a shopping, dining, and entertainment destination for the entire town. However, that district also indicates that compatible and complementary institutional uses may be appropriate, and that's why this case is before council tonight." Took a couple photos of the site. This would be standing at the western end of the proposed columbarium, looking east towards South Walker Street. You can see a large row of Leyland cypress along the left-hand side of the photo. A lot of those will be going away. There's also an existing community garden. A lot of that is intended to remain in the short term, as is the building you see there in the picture. There are several buildings on the site, including this small block wellhouse, it'd be, I guess, is what it was originally, and the residence. Those will serve in the short term to screen the proposed columbarium, or the majority of the proposed columbarium, from residential uses to the south. And then continuing to turn along, looking eastward back toward Academy Street, that's the rear of the Post Office. There will be some shrub and tree supplementation where the existing vegetation does not serve a type B buffer standard. Proposed layout, it's an open-air columbarium approximately 2,100 square feet in size. There's 10 potential areas in the wall designed for urn niches, obviously several urns per niche. Their interior plantings, small trees, there's a cross, an inlaid paver labyrinth, and then a pedestrian connection that connects out to the existing parking lot for First United Methodist Church. There are no pedestrian connections headed toward Academy Street this time, nor to the south. Basically, that's to serve, the intent is this be served from the parking lot of the church and not be accessed off Academy Street through Zev Summit Lane. Proposed columbarium would be surrounded by a brick wall approximately seven feet in height, concrete cap, decorative rowlock, soldier course at the bottom, who are inlays of wrought iron to provide some visibility into the interior of the site and open up the space. There will also be some decorative lighting attached only on the entrance side, the east elevation facing toward South Walker Street, as you can see here. Just for informational purposes only, and this isn't part of the site plan, but First United Methodist did provide an excerpt of their master plan document that showed what they had planned for the overall, what used to be the Griffiths Track, the track that now the parking lot sits on. Columbarium is part of that overall master plan and is, as is a community garden and potentially relocating the small wooden cabin which is currently sitting on Waldo to this site to make better use of that property. That concludes staff's presentation. I will be available, as will the applicant, following their testimony to answer any questions. And then I will go through the approval criteria once we get ready to make a motion. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, we'll call on the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jason Barron here on behalf of the applicant, First United Methodist Church. Here with me tonight to provide testimony in support of this application are Mr. Curtis Westbrook. He is, in addition to being a longtime owner of property and developer of property in the town of Cary, is a member of First United Methodist Church and has had the inenviable role with the church of shepherding this columbarium from start to finish. And I know that tonight hopefully will be the last step in the process for Curtis, and he can take a much deserved break. Also here with me tonight is Mr. Jim Davis of Community Land Design. He's the landscape architect who has prepared the plans that Kevin has presented to you all tonight. I will keep my comments brief, and we will attempt to keep our presentation brief. Kevin has done a great job of describing essentially what the, what the plan for development is. When I first got the call on this case, you know, I don't think I've ever been involved in a case where we're not generating any trips at all. I mean, as far as intensity of use, this is the first time that I didn't have to worry about standing up and trying to worry, you know, trying to pull on a Mike Horn or somebody along those lines and argue that traffic won't be that bad. So it's kind of nice. But as you know, this is an evidentiary proceeding, and we do have requirements of the ordinance that we have to show for issuance of the special use permit, which is required in this zoning district, as well as the site plan. I won't go through those specifically, what those requirements are, because I know Kevin's going to do that at the back end, but our evidence will be tailored to those requirements. At this time, I'm going to call Mr. Curtis Westbrook to the stand, who will testify, kind of in generally speaking, what the columbarium is, as well as a couple of other components of the approval process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Town Council. My name's Curtis Westbrook, and for the last 45 years, I have developed and owned property here in Cary. I'm a member of the columbarium building committee and former chairman of the First United Methodist Church Board of Trustees. I've been involved in the church's development of its long-range plan, which includes the columbarium site. The memorial garden columbarium is a permanent preservation site for cremains. There is a growing need among our church members, families, and friends who prefer the columbarium option as opposed to the more traditional burial. For centuries, churches have provided space on church grounds for burial of the deceased. Our memorial garden columbarium is a place to carry on this tradition and an eternal resting place for those who love First United Methodist Church and want to maintain closeness to the church even after death. The church recently engaged in a long-range planning process, and the columbarium that is before you tonight for approval is a big part of that plan. The columbarium is a needed mission of First United Methodist Church, and we believe will enhance the basic community function of our church. As you can see from the plans that have been submitted, as part of this special use permit application, the columbarium consists exclusively of a seven-foot-four-inch bricked walled enclosure with wrought iron panels. In addition to the niches that house the urns, the enclosure includes a lambreth area for meditation and reflection. The quite low-intensity nature of the use is certain to not have an adverse impact on adjacent properties. This is about as good a neighbor as you could possibly have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would invite other speakers who have been sworn in who wish to speak in support of the application to approach.
Good evening. Please pardon my voice. I'm thinking I'm alive because my nose is still running, so... My name is Jim Davis. I'm with Community Land Design. I'm the landscape architect that's been working with the church on this project. I'm also a member of, of the church, so, which is why I got roped into this anyways, I suppose. So I've been, I've been licensed to practice landscape architecture in North Carolina for the last 34 years. And I have an undergraduate degree in environmental design from NC State back in 1972. A lot of people here probably weren't here then or don't remember, but NC State had a pretty good basketball team back in those days. The proposal here is to improve a piece of property owned by the First United Methodist Church for use as a columbarium. Location in accordance with the church's master plan is tucked away and settled and private. It's easily reached from the church's existing parking by the proposed accessible ramp. It has an extremely low impact, and it's essentially as both, the guys before me have said, it's a brick fenced area that will serve as a quiet sanctuary and a place to house the urns. It's screened by vegetation on all sides. Let me go over a few points as they relate to the special use permit approval. From Cary's comprehensive plan, the town, the town center area recommends a mix of residential and non-residential users. It includes language indicating that compatible and complementary institutional uses are appropriate. This church is an institution that has existed in downtown Cary almost as long as the Cary has existed itself. In my opinion, it is my opinion that the use of this land for a columbarium generally conforms to the requirements of the comprehensive plan and other official plans and manuals adopted by the town. As for the safe and health and safety, as noted, this is a very low intensity use which would not materially endanger the public health or safety. As for the scale, given the nature of the columbarium, the proposed use will be in harmony with the scale, bulk, coverage, density, and character of the area. As for the location, as you've seen, the columbarium is located in the heart of downtown Cary with convenient access to public services and transit. Emergency services already exist to serve the property. The proposed use will not increase demands on public or emergency services. And the traffic, of course, as already noted, will not generate additional traffic, therefore will not cause undue traffic congestion. Now, a few short words about the compliance with the site plan approval standards. As noted in the staff report, the plan has been reviewed and is generally consistent with the requirements of the land development ordinance. The plan adequately protects other properties from the proposed use. There are several adjacent non-residential uses here. The plan provides a type B buffer on the north side, which is the one closest to the property line, and then has adequate landscaping on all the other sides, interior to the church's property. Again, this is a very, very low intensity use. The columbarium will be limited in scale and bulk. As we've already said, the walls are only seven foot tall and 64 foot long by 34 foot wide, and will not negatively impact the aesthetics of the surrounding community, and will be in harmony and unity with development of adjacent properties. The plan provides direct pedestrian access to and does not modify existing vehicular parking areas. As a result, it provides safe conditions for pedestrians and motors. The plan does not alter existing ingress or egress of the site, so emergency vehicles will continue to have adequate access. Finally, there is no anticipated increase in traffic as a result of proposed use. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers to speak in support of this application?
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor, at this point, I'd like to enter into evidence, a copy of the staff report, as well as the attachments that are included in the staff report, and ask that the council take judicial notice of, of the contents of the land development ordinance and the town's other adopted plans. And based on the testimony that the applicant has presented tonight, we believe we've satisfied the requirements of Section 3.8.3 for issuance of a special use permit, as well as the requirements of Section 3.9.2i of the land development ordinance for approval of a site plan, and we respectfully request you all approve the same. We're here to answer any questions that you all have once the hearing is concluded. Thank you.
Any others in support of the application?
Good evening. I'm Scott Corbin.
I can get you to move to the left.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members, Mayor, Mr. Shaver. I am a property owner and a business owner in downtown Cary, and I am here to represent a client of mine, and simply to present a document that was provided by his attorney. There's no, it has no impact on this particular proceeding. It's simply a notice regarding an easement, and there's no objection whatsoever to the special use. We're excited about what the church is doing. So I just want to make sure that you recognize that this is not in any way... My hope is that it doesn't in any way affect the council's position on this special use. So I'd just like to enter this in.
Oh, sure.
Sir, sir, is that document produced by someone other than you?
Yes, sir. It was, it was produced by my client's attorney.
It really would not be admissible, Mr. Mayor, because it's not of Mr. Corbin's own personal knowledge or something that...
I have knowledge because I witnessed him writing it and signing it.
The, the information there is presented by a third party who's not here and available for cross-examination, so it would not be appropriate to enter that material into evidence.
Okay. On advice of the attorney, I'm sorry, we're going to have to not admit that.
Can I, can I then...
Say what you know.
Say what I know.
Sure.
Okay. So, again, I'm not objecting to the, to the special use permit. I'm simply putting on public record a denial by Adele Properties LLC, who was, who I represented when acquiring the property, of the existence of a valid 10-foot driveway easement through my client's property, as is noted on the plan that was submitted by the church. The plan, in pertinent part, is attached to this letter by reference. The easement was once a necessity to obtain access to landlocked parcels, but upon the church's purchase and recombination of the landlocked parcels to their parcel, the once landlocked parcels are no longer landlocked because the church has other access points. And it was, in fact, mentioned earlier that they recognized that there was no, not necessary to access the property through Zev Summit Lane. Thus, the easement, no longer having a purpose for which it was created to serve, it will be, will be extinguished. Extinguishing the easement will unburden my client's land and will enable my client to use the land more efficiently for the betterment of downtown Cary. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers to speak in support of the application? Seeing none, I would invite anyone who would like to cross-examine any witness who spoke in support of the request. Seeing no one will open the hearing for those opposed to the request, and I would invite first speaker forward. No one's opposed, so there's no cross-examination necessary, and I'll call on the town's staff for any testimony they had wished to add.
I think we're good.
Okay. Anyone that has been sworn in have any objections to any evidence or testimony? Okay? Any reason to continue this public hearing by any of the parties? Okay. We'll now begin deliberative phase of the hearing and open it up to council members for comments and questions.
I just have a quick question, being my first columbarium. Is this a, do we have other columbariums within the town?
We do. There's, there's one that we approved several years ago at St. Michael's, I'm aware of. I'm sure there are a couple more, I just don't...
Cary Presbyterian has one, I think.
The direction Lutheran has one.
Yep.
That new place out on Green Hope, First Goose Hope School Road is building one or has one built.
And normally, we wouldn't see that here in front of council because it's not in the high mixed-use district?
Normally, it's a minor site plan because of the minor nature of it, and it would be an administrative approval. Because of the zoning district in which this church and all the churches in the center part of downtown are located, their expansions require special use approval.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Unless there's objections, I'd ask Mr. Hales to walk through the motions.
And just, just to remind you, the approval criteria, and there are two decisions you're being asked to decide on, they are separate actions. The special use would need to be approved first before you could approve a subsequent site plan. The applicant went over some of these briefly, but I'll just summarize the approval criteria for the special use itself. Those are, they generally complies with the comprehensive plan, that it not endangered the public health, that the use is reasonably necessary for the function of the community, that it not harm adjacent property values, that it be in harmony with the surrounding area, that it be served by public services, and it not cause undue traffic problems. Following that, you'll be asked to make a motion on the site plan, and those criteria are very similar, but slightly different. First, that they comply of all applicable requirements of the land development ordinance. Second, that they adequately protect other property. Third, that the use is harmonious with surrounding development. Fourth, the proposed plan provides safe circulation for vehicles and pedestrians, that it provides safe access for emergency services, and that it provides mitigation for traffic impacts expected to be generated.
Okay. Is there a motion for the special use?
For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the request for special use permit as the proposed expansion to the existing use meets all of the approval criteria set forth in Section 3.8.3. This approval shall include the following conditions. The resolution and permit approved in this special use application shall be recorded with the Wake County Register of Deeds upon expiration of the appeal period per Section 3.8.4E of the LDO. The original recorded resolution and permit shall be returned to the planning department when received from the register of deeds. And the approval of this special use is conditioned on the subsequent approval of the development plan in accordance with LDO Section 3.8.1B2 and as required under LDO Section 3.9.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion.
I'll just kind of throw this out there. I'm going to vote for the motion, but the reservation that I have in hearing this is the lost opportunity of doing something else that does contribute to the vibrancy of our downtown, because when we take this land and set it aside for this, it means that we were missing an opportunity to do something else on this piece of land that's pretty strategically located in our downtown core. So that's one of the things that I've, you know, I'm grappling with, as I sit at this table, but by and large, I think it's beautifully designed. I think that the, you know, the church is very excited about it, and, and maybe it does add to the vibrancy in the sense that it helps build the church. I don't know, but that's the only, you know, that's the only way I could justify that it really meets the applicable requirements of the LDO.
Okay. Other comments, questions? Okay. Other comments, questions? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion unanimously. Now the site plan?
Make a motion to approve the site plan. For, for the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the proposed site plan with the conditions as stated below, as it meets all of the approval criteria set of Section 3.9.2i. This approval is conditioned upon the following: That the applicant must satisfactorily address any remaining development review committee comments on the master plan set submitted for signature.
A second?
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hales. We're now, oh, and if everything's in order, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, closing the public hearing. Moving to our next quasi-judicial hearing is for the SAS Building P. An overview of the public hearing procedures and detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who want to speak during this public hearing must be administered an oath by the town clerk's administrative assistant. We'll pause at this time, take a moment, those, allow those individuals who would like to speak at the public hearing to approach the town clerk's administrative assistant and receive their oaths. Mayor Protem Adcock and I are both employed by SAS Institute. Council members have a duty to vote on items like this unless their vote is prohibited for conflict of interest purposes. Neither I nor any member of my family will receive a direct benefit from this development plan. Neither I nor any member of my family have a financial interest in this development plan, and I'll ask Ms. Adcock to confirm, confirm that the same is true for her.
The same is true for my family and myself.
Okay, very good. At this time, I'll ask any, I'll ask council members for any site visits, ex parte communications, financial relationships, specialized knowledge, or close relationships to an affected person to disclose, starting on my right, Mayor Protem Adcock.
Well, I go to campus every day because I work there, but I couldn't tell you exactly where Building P is supposed to go, so I'm gonna declare nothing.
Okay.
I have no relationship.
I have no relationship.
Have nothing to add other than what I've said already, and-
No, never, none.
Nothing for me.
Nothing here.
Okay, very good. We'll wait until the speakers have been sworn in, and then we'll continue. Does that disqualify them?
It should.
It should. Okay, all of our speakers have been sworn in. Having heard from all council members, it's important to inform the public that law states that we, as a council, exercising judicial, quasi-judicial functions are prohibited from participating in or voting on any quasi-judicial matter in the manner that would violate affected persons' constitutional rights to an impartial decision-maker. For example, violations of due process include, but are not limited to, a council member having a fixed opinion prior to hearing the matter, undisclosed ex parte communications, a close family, familial, I don't know how to say that word, familial-
Familial.
Familial.
Very good.
Business or other associated relationship with an affected person, or a financial interest in the outcome of the matter. If, if an objection is raised to a council member participating in this hearing, and the member does not recuse him or herself, then we, as a council, shall by majority vote rule on objection. Based on the disclosures we've heard from council members, I'll invite anyone to the podium who has been sworn in to speak if you have an objection to a council member's participation in this hearing. Anyone at all? Okay. I'll open up the quasi-judicial public hearing, and once again, Mr. Hales of our staff will introduce this hearing. Mr. Hales?
Thank you. The next request on tonight's agenda is a request by SAS for approval of a 248,000-square-foot office building, which would be part of SAS' existing office campus. Project is located on approximately 27 acres at the corner of SAS Campus Drive and Trenton Road. Northern border is defined by Interstate 40, which is obvi, obviously a thoroughfare. Trenton Road is a minor thoroughfare identified in the comprehensive transportation plan, and SAS Campus Drive is identified as a collector. You can't see it. This is a little older photography. Building Q is currently under construction on the wooded site in this, in this photograph to the west. There's an NC DOT Regional Traffic Management Office complex and parking area across Trenton Road to the east, and the SAS C Conference Center is the building that's under construction in this photograph to the southwest of the proposed site. The Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Facilities Master Plan identifies a proposed street-side trail running along the western side of Trenton Road. The applicant has committed to constructing that street-side trail as part of the widening of Trenton Road, which will be done with this project. A couple stream buffers shown on our GIS maps. The stream buffers identified along the western and northern property lines were delineated by the state as subject to the buffer rules. However, they're slightly shorter than shown in this GIS slide. The buffer running north-south through the center of the site was determined not to be subject to buffer rules by the state as well, so that one won't appear on the plans. Cary's land use designation for this property is office and institutional, which this proposed office would be consistent with. The proposed zoning is office, research, and development, as is the majority of SAS campus. Site's currently wooded, mixture of upland hardwood and pine forest stands. In this slide, it's a little more current photography. You can see SAS Q under construction to the west. Proposed site has the building located in the southwestern corner of the site, adjacent to the SAS Q site. Parking would be predominantly behind and to the side of the building with a small length of parking running along SAS Campus Drive toward Trenton Road. A large portion of the site, it's not shown on this slide, a large portion of the site that's shown to the northeast, will be preserved as existing vegetation and an easement as shown on the site plan. Architecturally, the building is a very modern office building, consistent with a lot of the design of the rest of SAS campus. This is a rendering provided by the applicant of the view, if you were standing in the streetscape along SAS Campus Drive, slightly kind of in between this building and Building Q. From the parking lot, it looks very similar, a lot of glass, concrete. Because of the square footage of the building, which is why this plan is before council tonight, the applicant did perform or have VHB engineering perform a traffic study on their behalf. The red dots indicate intersections that were studied and identified in the traffic study executive summary, which was attached to the staff report. I'll briefly go through and summarize those for you. Trenton Road at the back entrance to SAS Campus Drive was identified as needing a southbound right-turn lane with approximately 100-foot of storage on Trenton, and a northbound left-turn lane with approximately 200-foot of storage on Trenton. The applicant has committed to providing those improvements with their plan. Also identified the configuration of the driveway. As you can see, there's a dedicated left turnout, dedicated right turnout, and a single ingress lane. The plan is consistent with the recommendations of the traffic study. The traffic study also identified deficiencies at North Harrison Avenue and the I-40 on-and-off ramps. This has been identified in several traffic studies in the area. There are, it is a bigger regional traffic, or transportation congestion issue. NC DOT has some potential solutions, restriping and redesign of the ramps in the works. They're also looking at a feasibility study for broader improvements, and I'm sure the, the applicant's traffic engineer will speak more to that. The applicant has not committed to making any improvements to the intersection, with the exception of, and this was actually omitted accidentally from the staff report, because it was identified at the North Harrison and SAS Campus Drive intersection instead, but they are extending the left-turn lane approximately another 100 feet to provide additional storage for the left turn into SAS Campus Drive coming off the I-40 ramps. So there will be a little bit of restriping there to, to handle some of that additional turn traffic. Deficiencies were also included, or identified, at North Harrison Avenue and Weston Parkway. The proposed mitigation in the traffic study was identified as widening to accommodate an additional southbound lane through the intersection, southbound-through lane, while maintaining the existing turn lanes. Due to the size of the intersection, the property, and everything else, this is a very tough intersection to deal with. You've heard it on other projects in the Weston area. The applicant has not proposed to make any improvements to this intersection, in part because of the difficulties of widening, and in addition, their justification indicated that the future, the traffic generated to future projected volume by this project is approximately 1% of the total volume of the intersection. So that's a fairly minor impact relatively. Traffic study identified deficiencies in the southbound movement of Trenton Road at Trinity Road in the afternoon peak hour. As most of you are probably familiar, it's a very strange intersection. Trinity Road, which is the curving road running north and then curving going out directly east, is the through movement with, with kind of a triangular traffic pattern there with a couple stops, and then a road coming in from the west. The applicant's traffic engineer did look at a crash history and analyze it for that set of intersections, and indicated in their report that there was no pattern of accidents that related to congestion or unsafe movement, so they are not proposing at this time to make any improvements to that intersection. No improvements were identified for SAS Campus Drive, Research Drive, but it was mentioned in the report that they would want to monitor operations at, at that intersection in the future because it is, there are potential issues with the amount of traffic. As part of the, the plan moving forward, there are several minor modifications that were requested by the applicant. These deal with parking. It's kind of a two-tiered reduction we'll get into. Removal and replacement of champion trees on the site, and a request to modify the connectivity requirements between this building and the adjacent building So the parking reduction request is a, is a little complicated. The LDO by itself requires one parking space for every 300 square feet of gross floor area in an office building. So the office buildings, 24,000, 247,633 square feet, require 825 parking spaces. I've attached the applicant's justification statement to the staff report, but essentially what they're, what they're saying is there is a large amount of common area in their buildings. Corridors, in this case, there's a cafe on the lower level of the proposed office building, which will serve more than just this building. And due to that large amount of common space, they're requesting that we not consider that as gross square footage toward the parking requirements, and that they only have a parking requirement of 693. In addition to that, if council is inclined to, to follow that logic and use that logic for determining the parking requirement, they have requested only provide 400, 575 parking spaces, which represents a 17% reduction from the 693, which we just came up with. They are justifying that based on some operational considerations and some studies they've done on campus of existing office buildings that, that serve the same purpose. Some as operational considerations, I listed flexible hours, leave, people on leave, carpool incentives, et cetera. Second minor modification being requested is the removal and replacement of champion trees. In this site plan that is attached to the staff report, there are 12 champion trees identified on the site, or 12 large diameter trees identified on the site. Several of those are unhealthy and are being removed and are not required to be replaced. Of those 12 trees, five of them, four of them are healthy and are being actually removed. That's 2A through 2D. And then Tree 2E, or modification request 2E, is a large diameter tree that's healthy. It's not being removed. However, there's a large amount of grading taking place in the proximity of that tree in order to get a retaining wall in there to hold the parking lot, or hold the hill up from the parking lot. So from the planning department's perspective, we're considering that tree as being removed, even though it will actually stay on-site. So they are providing replacements for that tree in addition to the other four. Two trees, 2A and 2D, excuse me, are being replaced because of their location in the middle of the parking lot, or proposed parking lot. Trees 2B and 2C are both being removed because that is the location of their erosion control devices. The site falls off toward I-40 and the creek that runs along the northern property line. So since water runs downhill, that's where the proposed erosion control devices are, and those two trees would need to be removed for that reason. Connectivity, just to give you an idea of, of the way Building Q is laid out on the site. Building Q is, is located adjacent to the shared parking lot from the adjacent building to it. So it's located away from the proposed Building P, which we're here to talk about tonight. So they're not proposing any vehicular connectivity between those two. Part of the reason is that buffer we had mentioned earlier that runs along the, stream buffer that runs along the western property line. It runs probably two-thirds the length of the property line or so. Because of the, it would push the vehicular connection so close to SAS Campus Drive, another connection between those two could be argued was a little redundant. They have provided sidewalk vehicular, pedestrian connections between that and the adjacent site, which is consistent with what they've done, and it will help get people to the cafe, which, like I said, will serve adjacent buildings as well as this one.
Lost my place. That concludes staff's presentation. It'll be available following the hearing if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll call on the applicant's attorney for time to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Keith Burns. I'm here on behalf of SAS tonight. We'll be brief, but we'll, we'll, we will be offering testimony on the six elements that you'll be asked to consider, as well as additional testimony regarding those three minor modifications. That testimony's gonna come from George Finch, landscape architect, who is responsible for the site plan that's been developed, also from Lyle Overcash, who is a traffic engineer who's, will be here to speak about traffic. And if necessary, but probably not, we have John Monroe, the arborist, who has identified the, the trees on the site. Sorry that we're gonna make you talk about traffic on this one, but we do have some vibrancy that perhaps the last one lacked. With that, I'd invite George to come up and talk to you very briefly. Mr. Finch, would you introduce yourself to council, please?
Yes, good evening. My name is George Finch. I'm president of George Finch Boney and Associates in Raleigh. I am a 1975 graduate of the College of Design at North Carolina State University, and I am a registered landscape architect. For the past 30 years, my company and I have had the pleasure of providing design and permitting services for SAS as the campus has developed. It's been a pleasure. During that time, we've worked with the staff and, in the old days, appeared before the Appearance Commission and the Planning and Zoning Board and the council, as we brought, brought plans in for your review and approval. Not only were those plans for SAS, but other clients also.
Mr. Finch, if you will, tell us about this particular site plan and your efforts to develop the site plan that's before council tonight, please.
We entered into the design process with a number of goals that were shared between the design team and SAS. The first of those goals was to be environmentally sensitive to the site. Some examples of that being to minimize the clearing and grading, to minimize the possibility of off-site views from off-campus into the campus, to avoid construction activities on steep slopes, and to orient the building to accomplish energy-saving goals as best possible. Second of those goals was to make the facility user-friendly, an example being to provide and promote pedestrian travel throughout the campus. Third and fourth goals complement the rest of the campus and be cost-conscious. After working our way through 18 building and site variations, we arrived at a plan that is the best response to the existing natural conditions on the site and the goals that I just described to you. After submitting site plans to the staff, we were pleased that when we received their comments, most of the comments involved clarifications and committed notes on the plans, and we had no comments that required significant design changes. I would like to add that the resulting plan that is presented to you tonight calls for preservation of 45% of the site area in its natural condition.
Mr. Finch, council's gonna be called upon to answer six questions regarding this application, and I'd like to address each of those with you in turn if I could. Does the site plan as proposed comply with the LDO?
With the exception of the minor modifications requested, it is my professional opinion that this, the plan is otherwise in compliance with the requirements of the LDO.
May I turn your attention now to the adjoining properties? Does the plan protect other properties from potential adverse impacts of this development?
Yes, it does.
Explain that for me, please.
The proposed development is compatible with the uses on the surrounding properties. The buffers and separation that we have achieved from adjoining properties are adequate to minimize visual and auditory impacts, if any, and we have incorporated adequate stormwater management measures to attenuate any off-site impacts from stormwater.
And does the plan provide harmony and unity- And does the plan provide harmony and unity with the development of nearby properties?
Yes, it does. The proposed use is consistent with current and planned office uses to the west and south of the project site, which are part of the SAS campus, and is also consistent with any likely use to be proposed on the NCDOT property that is across on the other side of Trenton Road. Site plan complies with the town's land use plan and the requirements of the zoning ordinance.
And does the plan provide safe conditions for pedestrians and motorists?
Yes, it does. For the benefit of pedestrians, we're providing adequate onsite walks connecting the parking areas to the main building entrance, and we are extending the onsite off-street walkways that connect from building to building and further promote pedestrian traffic on the campus. We are adding an additional crosswalk at SAS Campus Drive connecting to the south side and to the recently completed Building C.
Are there traffic calming measures in advance to that crosswalk?
There is a reduced speed limit posted on SAS Campus Drive, and there are speed bumps that are strategically located along SAS Campus Drive.
Does the plan provide safe ingress and egress for emergency vehicles?
Yes, it does. The plan provides streets and drives that are of adequate width and curvature to allow access of emergency vehicles. We have direct access to the front main entrance of the building. We also have a direct drive that traverses through the site to provide access for fire department to critical facilities in the service court area.
And finally, on the list of six topics, does the plan provide mitigation for traffic congestion?
Yes, it does. In support of that answer, I would refer to the TIA that was prepared for the project, and Mr. Overcash will speak to this in more detail later in our presentation.
Thank you. I'd like to turn your attention now to the minor modifications that are before council. Can you tell me how many parking spaces are provided in the plan?
We are proposing 575 parking spaces.
And what's the basis for that number of spaces?
Historically, compliance with the LDO has provided an excess of parking spaces, a rather large number in excess. Over an approximately 10-year period, we have monitored parking at SAS in the similarly sized buildings and tried to make comparisons with that with the actual building occupancy. And this has shown an actual parking demand to be somewhat less than 80% of the design capacity of the building, the employee expectation. We also looked at what were the contributing factors to this number, and are these factors consistent and are these factors dependable? Some of the factors are work and employee-related. They include periods of off-site work, travel to customer locations and to regional offices, an active program that promotes carpooling through the use of designated preferred parking spaces, and secure bike racks and shower facilities in these buildings that are available for those that might choose to bike to work.
And considering the space in the building that is in fact going to be used for office, what percentage reduction in spaces are we requesting here?
We are requesting a 17% reduction in the number of parking spaces, which will align more closely with our actual monitored parking requirement.
Is that request consistent with the spirit of the ordinance?
The minor modification is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance, as it will allow us to provide the needed parking while reducing unnecessary site clearing and grading. We feel the finished product will result in less visual impact and less impervious area to be attenuated for stormwater runoff.
And I think you just told me that it will result in a reduction in visual impact and effective environmental or open space enhancement.
That is correct.
Move on, if I can, to the next minor modification having to do with the removal of trees. How many healthy champion trees were located on the space?
Well, if I could go through it, there were 18 trees identified that would possibly qualify as champion trees on the site. Four of these trees were identified as being in poor health. Of the 14 remaining that do qualify as champion trees, we found it necessary to remove four trees due to their location within the construction limits, and one tree that will be retained but will suffer encroachment of the critical root zone. The four trees are located in areas of sediment basins where it's necessary to put in these sediment basins at the low point on the site to capture discharge from the site, and also in locations where we have considerable changes in elevation from the natural conditions to the built conditions.
Can you describe for me, please, your efforts to save those four trees?
We have looked at, as I said earlier, a number of variations on the site plan, and we've gone through 18 variations of building and site plans as we prepared this project. We were faced with excessive slopes on a good portion of the eastern part of the site and the site adjacent to I-40. Most of the champion trees were in that area, and so that's part of the reasoning that we have pulled the building so far to the southwest, one of the reasons. The other reason for close proximity to Building Q. But we chose this portion of the site and this layout after many iterations, realizing that if we relocated to save one of these trees, then likely we were in some of the very steep slope areas and would end up with much more clearing of tree cover than otherwise with our preferred layout. We did incorporate a number of retaining walls at considerable expense into the site. I'm not sure you can see it. Well, you can see it on the plan that is before you. The line that runs along the northeast side of the parking areas is all retaining wall. There are other retaining walls around the west side of the building and on the parking that extends to the east, and this was an attempt there again to limit the disturbance and limit the grading as much as possible and to stay off of those steeper slopes, some approaching 10% through a big portion of the site.
Is this minor modification consistent with the spirit of the ordinance?
Yes, this minor modification is consistent.
Can you explain that to me, please?
The LDO seeks to prohibit the indiscriminate removal of trees and to maximize the preservation of open space. After working through these 18 plan variations and adding substantial retaining walls, we are confident that this plan accomplishes that goal.
And does this plan address difficulties with the site?
Yes, it does.
I'd like to turn your attention finally to the connection to the adjoining lot. Can you describe for me, please, the ordinance requirement regarding connectivity?
Section 710 of the LDO calls for connectivity between adjoining properties for vehicles, pedestrians, and bicycles. The goal is to provide choices as to how to move from one property to another in a safe manner and to limit congestion on busy thoroughfares. The question before us is connectivity between the subject site and the adjoining SAS Q building that is under construction. Separating these two sites, as Kevin indicated, is a news buffer and urban transition buffer that extends from the I-40 right-of-way up the property line approaching SAS Campus Drive. Those buffers would restrict the area available for constructing connectivity for vehicles between the two sites. SAS Campus Drive is a private street with a reduced posted speed limit, as I mentioned, and speed bumps at strategic locations. Vehicular connectivity to avoid accessing SAS Campus Drive would present a very limited benefit in this case. It's been the practice of SAS Institute to actively promote pedestrian travel and somewhat discourage vehicular traffic from building to building through a system of off-street walkways, and we have incorporated an extension of those walkways to this site and feel that will serve very well in pedestrian connectivity. Given the configuration of the building entrances and the building parking lots, walking directly from this building to Building Q or vice versa would likely be more time-efficient than walking to your car, driving over to the other building, finding a parking place, and going into that building.
Is the absence of a connector in this circumstance consistent with the spirit of the ordinance?
Yes, it is.
Can you explain that to me, please?
The LDO connectivity requirement seeks to reduce traffic on collector streets by allowing motorists to drive from one building to a neighboring building without using a public road. In this instance, buffers are limiting the connectivity options that we have. No public roads are impacted, and connectivity is provided for pedestrian traffic, which is more convenient than vehicular traffic. Avoiding a connection will allow the preservation of existing vegetation and enhance the open space qualities of the project site.
And would avoiding the connection here address a problem with the site? A difficulty with the site?
Yes, it would.
In particular, the buffers?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Overcash, you want to come up and introduce yourself, please?
Thanks, Kevin. Yes, my name is Lyle Overcash. I'm a managing director at VHB here in Raleigh, 4000 West Chase Boulevard. I hold a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering with specialty in transportation in 1993. I'm a licensed professional engineer in North Carolina and Virginia. I've been, since 2004, been working in the town of Cary as one of your on-call consultants. During that period, I've directed over 75 studies within the town.
And you've been retained to conduct a study as it relates to this SAS project. Would you describe that for us, please?
Yes, SAS approached my firm to assist with the preparation of the TIA since we've worked on previous studies on the campus and we're very familiar with the area. We use standards and prevailing methodology in our industry to research and complete the TIA, which evaluated projected traffic delay and queuing as a result from the construction of Building P.
And what were the results of that? Or what were the areas that you studied first?
Yes, we had a quite extensive study area, starting with the access of Research Drive and Harrison. We also studied Weston Parkway at Harrison, Harrison Square Shopping Center, SAS Campus Drive, of course, and the eastbound ramps at I-40. Moving on campus, we studied the internal intersection of SAS Campus Drive in Research, the proposed site driveway at Building P, the back entrance of SAS at SAS Campus Drive in Trenton, and then also the subset of three intersections of Trinity Road and Trenton.
What were the results of that study?
To begin with the study, we conducted the existing conditions analysis based on turning movement counts that were collected during 2013. We established a, we call background, no build condition for 2016, which used a 2% growth rate plus site traffic from four other developments that are approved in the area. We then generated the traffic based on 250,000 square feet of office space. That's the gross square footage that we used. It would result in about 318 trips in the morning peak, about 286 total trips in the afternoon, and just over 2,100 daily trips for the building. We distributed the trips based on the network. We have good data from SAS, about 65% we sent up SAS Campus Drive towards Harrison, that would use Research Drive as well, and 35% towards Trenton Road. Then, to establish the build conditions, we added the site traffic onto the no-build traffic and determined what improvements needed to be proposed by the development.
And did you recommend some improvements?
Yes, as Kevin described earlier, he did a very good job. That's good. We're starting with the back entrance of the site, since the site is located kind of bordering SAS Campus Drive and Trenton Road. We're going to widen Trenton Road significantly per the CTP, which calls out as a three-lane road. We're going to also provide a southbound right turn lane and a northbound left turn lane into the site. On the site itself, we recommended that they have two exiting lanes coming out of the site and one inbound lane, and then also restriping of the inside through lane to a through-left lane, and this westbound lane on SAS Campus Drive to a through-right lane, and there will be a crosswalk striped here as well. I think the other one, yes, this has a better image. This is a kind of a modified image. It shows two things. One is the extension of the left turn lane into SAS Campus Drive. We took advantage of some additional area that we can gain here for queuing. It extends, the current storage is about 300 feet, and we will extend it to about 400 feet. This image also shows NCDOT's plans to provide dual rights going on to the eastbound ramp to I-40. They're going to restripe this inside through lane through a through-right lane. They're going to widen the receiving ramp to I-40, and so this should help with traffic, especially in the PM peak hour or even in AM peak hour as well, as this movement's heavy all day. Also, DOT for that interchange, as Kevin mentioned, has plans. It's called feasibility study, FS 1005A. DOT and their consultant has shared some plans with me, different options of loops in some of the interchange ramps. But again, it's a feasibility study, and they're studying different things along I-40 as part of a bigger study.
I'd like to shift your attention now from the TIA that you completed to a few of the findings that council's going to be called upon to make. Does the plan provide for safe conditions for pedestrians and motorists?
Yes, internal intersection design are consistent with industry standards. The site distances and site triangles are appropriate. At driveway intersections, sidewalks are provided throughout the site, around the parking lot, around the perimeter building, and the building itself is connected to Building Q, which is very good. As George mentioned, traffic calming measures are not proposed on the site itself, but they do have speed bumps on SAS Campus Drive, and it is posted at an unusual speed limit of 23 miles per hour.
Does the plan provide for safe ingress and egress for emergency services?
Yes. The driveway access is proposed as a three-lane driveway. I think I can flip back up to it. And so therefore allows, if we were to have a stop vehicle in one of these lanes, it would allow an emergency vehicle to bypass that stop car if necessary. On-site itself, turn radio are adequate to accommodate emergency vehicles.
And finally, I want to ask you about the minor modification regarding connectivity to the adjacent site. Can you describe for us the reasons that connectivity might be a good idea and might not be applicable here?
From a traffic engineer perspective, connectivity is most beneficial when connecting complementary uses such as residential to commercial. Here we have, the neighboring uses are the same. They're both office, so it's not as critical, in my opinion, to connect for vehicles, but it's important to connect for pedestrians. The site is also bordered by I-40, Trenton Road, and SAS Campus Drive, so the only opportunity is to connect to SAS Building Q, but we achieve no beneficial level of service because the site driveway is operating except like now as a B or a C, so there's no benefit to reroute traffic to the other parking lot and use their driveway. So we don't project any problems at the site driveway.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
And those are all the witnesses we have. I would submit to you that you've heard now from each of those witnesses about each of the six elements that you're going to be called upon to hear. The uncontroverted evidence from those witnesses, and I think there's been no contesting that in evidence from anything the staff reported from staff, is that each of those six elements has been met. Those witnesses have also suggested to you, offered testimony that I think is uncontroverted, that says that each of the elements with respect to the minor modifications has been met, and I don't believe there's anything terribly contradictory to that in the staff report, and so on those bases, on behalf of SAS, I would ask that you approve the site plan application. Witnesses and I are here for any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'll invite other speakers who have been sworn in who would like to speak in support of the application. Anyone else? Okay? Anyone who would like to cross-examine witnesses who are in support of the application? Okay? Now, open the hearing for those who are opposed to the request. Anyone in attendance opposed? Okay? Town staff have anything to add?
Good.
You do or don't?
We're good.
Oh, we're good, okay. Let's see. Does either party believe there's evidence presented that warrants a continuance of this hearing? I don't think so. Okay? And we'll open the deliberative phase of the hearing for council members for comments or questions. I have a question about the parking for the applicant. I believe there was a statement, and I'm going to be paraphrasing, that you studied other buildings and you based your parking numbers based on those buildings because they're a little less than 80% of the parking space. And I was wondering which buildings those were. I'm assuming they're the newer buildings because building R required additional parking in the form of parking day.
That's correct. It was the buildings on the eastern portion of the campus that are more similarly sized to this, and I think what we've found in the old part of campus is that by is that by the clustering of the buildings, we have a lot of situations where somebody may be parking across the street in the, what would be considered the Building H parking lot, but it's closer to walk across the street to the Building J entrance. And so you have a lot of clustering of parking in some of those areas that has tended to exacerbate that kind of situation. And, and I think the significant thing here is that when those areas cropped up, SAS was there to repair those areas. We have added, gone back into some of that part of the campus and added parking spaces, and, and in one case, or added the parking deck. So I, it's, it's something that they recognize and take action on.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Actually, I have a follow-up to that, if I might. There was a comment made that, and maybe I misunderstood this, that it was a 17% reduction in the parking that you were asking for, for a modification, but when I do the math, I come up that you want a 30.6% reduction. So, um, could, maybe you could help me with that?
We, we have tried to look at the building and its use, um, differentiating between gross square footage and effective square footage. And the difference in the two, to me, is if we look at the cafe space, which occupies a significant part of the basement in this building, and the food preparation and food storage areas, if we back that square footage out because it is not a public cafe that people are coming in off the street or driving to, to get service. It's there for the, the building occupants and someone from the Q building that might choose to walk over there. So, we, we backed out that square footage as well as square footage that, um, was primarily what we would call extra square footage because of additional mechanical and electrical provisions that were basic to the owner's wishes, more so than just a standard tenant-occupied building.
So the 17% is based on your modification number?
That's correct.
Your number?
That's correct.
Is that Mr. Hales, did I?
Correct, and I, I kind of went through it quickly, but it is a, a two-tiered request for a minor modification. The first is that you consider their proposed calculation backing out the, the common open space in the cafe and, and everything else. And if that is council's desire to accept that basis for the calculation and establish a requirement of 693 parking spaces, after that, the 575 represents a 17% reduction from there.
So does the building that you are showing us that connects only via pedestrian, is that, does that have a cafe as well?
That building does not. The next one over does. So that building is in between two buildings that both have cafes. Building T and Building P will have cafes.
And the one to the south has one.
That's right. Building C, across the street, has a cafe.
That building that is accessible only pedestrians, so if it's raining and they don't want to walk outside, they're going to drive to one of the places that have a cafe. There's no way to service those people for food?
Right, they probably... They probably would go to Building T because it's closer.
Closer, okay. It's hard to tell because you only see one building on the map.
So you've got four buildings and three cafes in that area.
Okay.
And, and I, I don't want to bore you with figures, but, but when we did our analysis of the building, we identified 38,172 square feet in the basement of this building, a little under 1,000 on the first floor, and 8,200 on the second through sixth floors, which we considered collaboration space, additional meeting space for group meetings outside of their offices. And, and we, we didn't try to skin it down. We, we looked at it in a sense that, um, let's compare this to a traditional office building, and yes, we know there are conference rooms in traditional office buildings. These are a little more gracious. So that brought us down to a figure of 200,457 square feet. When we apply the UDO requirement of one per 300 square feet to that number, we, we ended up at 669 spaces. Then we went back and added, um, spaces to account for the staff in the kitchen and the cafe space on a one-per-one. How many employees are going to be in that space? This is how many parking spaces are going to, and then we threw in a few extras. So that's how we got to the, to the 693.
Thank you.
Related to that, um, I don't think anybody knows SAS's parking requirements better than SAS. Uh, so I, I frankly don't argue with the number of 575. But I do question, unless this has happened times before my time sitting up here, that we're not setting a precedent of, of any sort. I mean, I believe your 693 number and not the 575 number, but it's almost like, you know, we're allowed to, to do 25%, and here we're, we're not, we're doing more than 25% because we're taking the applicant's number. Any applicant come in, can come in, and, and you've justified it beautifully with those last calculations. That, that helped me a whole lot. But other applicants may not, and they'll come in here and say, "Well, ordinance says 800, but we only need 700", and are we setting a precedent in, in actually going to 30% here?
We have, even administratively. The, the, LDO does give some flexibility to the planning director to consider unusual situations or unusual layouts. Probably not on this scale have we done it administratively. I can't speak of any examples off the top of my head, uh, but we have looked at, uh... You may have a, a mixed-use type building, and instead of calculating on the gross square footage, we'll calculate this square footage at one ratio and this square footage at another, instead of trying to make a blanket ratio. So we, there is some precedent for individual consideration, um, probably just not on this scale.
Thank you.
Probably, probably the Building C. We dove into a lot of the parking issues there because it was more of a multi-use type building, and we went through a similar computation identifying spaces and applying uses to those spaces to get to a parking count that we felt was realistic for what was needed.
No, I, I think your calculation makes, makes good sense. I just see that 25% as kind of the built-in wiggle room that we have, and here we're, you know, we're going beyond that, and probably in this case, I'm okay, but I'm just worried that the next one's not going to come in at some point and use their own numbers and that, you know, that, that we, staff at least, looks at that and, um, decides whether it's re... the applicant's numbers are really reasonable, you know, before they...
Right, and, and the benefit here is that something like that would go to council anyway, and you guys would have the discretion to say, "Your numbers don't make sense."
So we get to determine if it's reasonable.
Right.
Other questions?
Comment, uh, not about parking. It's a shame to lose the four champion trees. I think you've made your case of why that's necessary, given the erosion issues and the retaining walls and everything. Appreciate the fact they're going to be replaced, but I always worry about the, it's unfortunate they have to, that they're right there where the parking lot has to be. But since I usually talk about champion trees, I feel like I should say that.
Other questions are coming?
My, my tree comment along the same lines. I was looking here to be convinced that we needed to take down those trees. I don't like to take down any champion trees. But Mr. Finch said 18 site plans were looked at, and short of us looking at all 18 tonight and going through all that detail, um, I mean, I, I take your word for it that you, you did try to look at this 18 times before you arrived at this, and you mentioned it's environmentally sensitive. 45% is going to be preserved, and you also talked about tree cover allowing to, uh, to remain as opposed to just those individual champion trees. And I think when we look at a new tree ordinance, we're going to see a lot of that, too, that tree cover matters just as much as sometimes...
Tree number.
Trees. And so I, I take your word that you really did look through all those site plans, and I appreciate that testimony tonight also.
And the reality is that a site of this size and magnitude, I, I don't know how you couldn't impact a couple few, four trees. I mean, it's just...
Yeah, it's amazing it was on the score, I guess.
So that you only are impacting the, the few that you are, I think speaks to how much effort you all put in to trying to plan this site as, uh, to, to preserve as many of those trees as you could, and the willingness to, to supplant that, I, I think speaks volumes for, for SAS, so.
The one thing I would say is that, you know, the council has expressed concern in the past about over-parking some of our new buildings. So I'll be very intrigued as time goes on to see if this reduction works, if, um, if there's still ample spots. So, um, I, you know, I'd love to have a follow-up in a couple of years and just say, you know, "How did this work with this, with this reduction in the parking?"
And, and I can tell you, as a personal observation, and it's no scientific value at all, that the new buildings he's talking about has extra spaces. When you drive there in the middle of the day, anytime, there are extra spaces.
Always ample spaces, even though they had a reduction? That's good.
I was only going to, um, I'm so glad Mr. France and Mr. Yarha brought up the issue about how many plans do we see that have 45% site preservation? I mean, that's amazing. So I can only imagine the, the back and forth with the 18 different site plans. I mean, I think that speaks well of this site.
Me, too.
I just had one last question, if I may. The traffic study that was done, does that include the huge amount of traffic that will be coming in for MetLife?
Yes.
It does, because you, I think you mentioned it was based on 2013 data with a certain percentage growth and...
Four, four background studies, and, and one of them was the MetLife, uh, project, which greatly contributed to the congestion at Weston Parkway and Harrison.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. We'll go ahead and close the comment portion. Mr. Hales, you walk us through the motions, please.
Similar to the first hearings we had, there are a couple of items, a couple of action items. Each minor modification could be considered individually or have, or the staff has prepared, uh, combined motions, so you can act on, either approve or all, or deny all of them as one motion. So you would need to act on the minor modifications first. Uh, here's the, the list of the three that were there. Just a reminder, the approval criteria for those, which is in worksheet one of the staff report, that the modification advanced the goals of the ordinance, and that the modification results in either less visual impact or more effective environmental preservation, or relieves practical difficulty in developing a site. And then following your action on those minor modifications, you'd be taking action on the development plan with the same approval criteria we heard last time.
Okay, very good. I would entertain a motion related to the minor modifications.
For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the minor, minor modification requests made by the applicant as the requests meet all the approval criteria of section 3.19.1, comma, 7.8.2H and 7.10.3 of the LDO.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Motion on the development plan?
For the reasons discussed, I move that we approve the proposed site plan with conditions as stated below, as it meets all of the approval criteria set of section 3.9.2I. The approval is conditioned upon the following, that the applicant must satisfactorily address any remaining development review committee comments on the master plan set submitted for signature.
This is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Uh, if everything's in order, it is, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you. And we'll now move to our final quasi-judicial public hearing. It's for the Patel Brothers Grocery. An overview of the hearing procedures and detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who want to speak during the public hearing must be administered an oath by the town clerk's administrative assistant. We're going to pause for a moment to allow those individuals who want to speak at this public hearing to approach the town clerk's administrative assistant and receive their oaths. And at this time, I'll ask the council members if they have any site visits, ex parte communications, financial relationships, special knowledge or close relationships to an affected person to disclose, starting on my left.
I do not.
Mr. Yarha?
I do not.
I do not?
I do not.
Ms. Robinson?
I do not.
None.
And we'll wait for Ms. Bush. She'll be right back, and she can disclose if she has any.
He's something out of a movie, you know? My staff who are doing like that.
After, after you read that motion, I'm going to ask you to repeat it.
Wait, wait for one that's like a Hall and...
You repeat that.
Ms. Bush? Council members have disclosed whether or not they're, uh, if they've had any ex parte communications, financial relationships, specialized knowledge, close relationship to an affected person to disclose. Do you have any?
I do not.
You do not? That completes the, um, poll of the council members. And based on their disclosures, we've, which we've heard from the council members, I'd invite anyone to the podium who has been sworn in to speak in objection to a council member's participation. Seeing none, we'll open the quasi-judicial public hearing. Mr. Hales will introduce the item.
Thank you. Final item on tonight's agenda is a request by Patel Brothers Grocery for a site plan for revisions to their existing service and loading area and their existing retail site at 802 East Chatham Street. Uh, most people are probably familiar with the site. It's located in the southeastern corner of the intersection of East Chatham Street and Southeast Maynard Road. Used to be a former grocery boy junior. It was converted to Patel Brothers Grocery several years ago. Both Maynard, Southeast Maynard Road and East Chatham Street are identified as major thoroughfares and carries comprehensive, comprehensive transportation plan. There's a vacant site owned by the Cooper family and then Cooper Furniture, uh, beyond the site to the east. To the south is an automotive repair use and a small retail building. Chatham Square Retail Complex is located to the west across Southeast Maynard Road, and then there's a railroad corridor on the north side of East Chatham Street. Uh, the site is located along, uh, existing fixed, both local and regional transit routes, TTA and C-Trans. Uh, site is identified in the land use plan for commercial uses and is zoned general commercial in the town zoning maps. Uh, as I mentioned before, it's, it's an existing old site. The property to the north, the northern arm of the property is, is the existing Patel Brothers Grocery store. To the south are two vacant, partially vegetated parcels that are being acquired by the, uh, owners of Patel Brothers to do the revisions. This is the shot of the existing store standing at the intersection, looking south toward the proposed revisions. Uh, this is the back of the building as it sits today. They'll be providing an additional roll-up door and a new dumpster enclosure. Currently, the dumpster enclosure sits, uh, there's a turnout from Maynard Road. The truck has to park parallel along the right-of-way, and there's a dumpster and a loading door on that side. Uh, just a quick shot of the existing vegetation on the property where the new driveway will be. You can see in the background the existing warehouse building on the back of the Coopers' property, which will come into play in one of the minor modification requests. And then looking south from the property toward Discovery Automotive, there's very little vegetation there. As part of this site plan, the site will be cleaned up, and there'll be a buffer provided between those two uses. It'll be a Type B. I'm sorry, Type C. Proposed changes include closing the driveway cut I mentioned earlier. It's currently right here about halfway along the length of the building, and here's the, the ramp they use for loading, the two dumpsters face out on the Maynard Road. And that driveway cut would be closed in favor of opening, uh, a new service drive, which will ultimately serve as a connection, um, out to the larger vacant parcel to provide access for that and any redevelopment of the Cooper Furniture and properties further east out to Maynard Road at some point in the future. A new dumpster enclosure would be sited facing south behind the building. Those are the main, major ones. Changes to the building facade are fairly limited, just the addition of a roll-up door to service the new loading dock and a new personnel door next to it. And as I mentioned before, dumpsters would be facing away south of the building, so this is the south facade. Colors and materials to match the existing. Site does include two minor modifications, uh, both of them related to existing conditions. Minor modification one is a modification to our connectivity requirements. Typically, they'd be required to provide or construct a vehicular, vehicular connection to the property line. They're requesting an easement. And then the other minor modification number... And then the other minor modification number two is a streetscape reduction. Zooming in a little bit, you can see the existing warehouse building sits right along the existing property line, almost adjacent to it. There's a minor, there's a minor change to the property lines to accommodate the location of that building. This line would go away and then they have ten foot around that building in case that building were ever burned or suffer more than fifty percent casual that they could rebuild it. But because of the building's location and the topography involved, if you remember the photo, several slides ago, there's a rise in the back. Well, they'd be cutting into that to put the drive in. So the grades won't line up without doing any off-site grading. In order to do that, they'd get into the building. So they really would have a hard time physically making the connection anyway. Plus, provision of an easement would allow them to provide some semblance of a vegetated buffer in the short term. However, it would allow the developer in the future to make the connection should the Coopers redevelop that property. There's also some uncertainty into how the ultimate connectivity in this area would go. If that warehouse building stays, there's an existing stub coming from the Chatham Village, which is where Bojangles is, three or four properties to the east. That property, that stub headed in this direction is slightly farther to the north. It would line up kind of in between the existing Cooper Furniture and their warehouse building shown here. So that easement may never get used, it's there to meet the requirements. Second request is a streetscape reduction. That's based on the existing layout of the building. Obviously, the loading dock and dumpsters need to be located on the rear of the building or in close proximity to the building. The green dash line shown this slide is the existing right of way. The building is approximately five, six feet off the right of way. So providing a traditional streetscape would be well nigh impossible and still provide access to the rear of the building and to the dumpsters. They would be closing that driveway. They would be eliminating a lot of impervious surface in that area and providing additional green space. There are trees shown in this drawing. It's important to keep in mind, a lot of that vegetation is in the right of way so that's gonna be subject to some level of DOT review. It will be some sort of green space. Shrubs and trees would be our preference. We have not gotten all the way through discussions with DOT to see whether or not they would allow those trees. The shrubs generally are easier to negotiate that with DOT. This is what it looks like today. Basically, what they're proposing is roughly the area at the end of the cart corral back to that existing driveway closure would become some sort of green space. So obviously, it's a much better condition than we have today. They do need to remain, or retain access to that ramp up the side for smaller deliveries. That would still be access from the rear, but there would be some impervious surface back there. But there would be at least a row of shrubs just outside the sidewalk to provide more screening than there is today. That concludes staff's presentation. It'll be available if you have any questions following the hearing. Thank you.
Okay. This time, I'll invite the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Tom Worth, I'm an attorney from Raleigh, P.O., Box one seven nine nine, Raleigh, two seven six zero two, appearing tonight in behalf of the Patel Brothers of North Carolina, Inc., owners of the grocery store. With the permission of your council, for illustrative purposes only, I'd like to show you how far this property has come under the supervision, ownership of the Patel Brothers. And I have graphics here. Mr. Sill.
Give it to him, Tom.
Illustrative purposes only. The first one shows the grocery boy junior built fifty-one years ago. It threw, went through different ownerships in apparently constant decline. The only difference between that photo, the first one there, and what the Patel Brothers bought about five years ago is that the gas pumps along Southeast Maynard had been removed and the canopy had been removed. But what you see otherwise is what they purchased. The second, that photo unfortunately is undated by Wake County G.I.S. The second photo is however dated and that is after their approved improvements with the interaction with your staff and of course, the planning board and I think council. Tonight, and we will move along as briskly as we can. I have witnesses. Chad Simmons is our group leader with Triangle Civil Works, P.A. He's the project manager and although his appearance belies that he has nineteen years experience in surveying and as a civil engineer. Crawford, Carter Crawford is our, who has a PhD, but he has a master's in landscape architect and Carter is also an important part of our team, particularly as far as our streetscape is concerned. Backing up those two men, Jason Byrd, an architect with Phillips Architecture. He has ten years experience. Carter, by the way, I must tell you, has got about thirty years experience. And he'll give you, they'll each give you a brief rundown of their backgrounds. Also, we have Krista Green here, a P.E. with Stan Tech, who has a master's in traffic engineering. Billy Sparkman is the contractor who led the renovation of the building in behalf of the brothers, Patel Brothers, several years ago. And Billy is here if there's some historical type questions that you all might have. And finally, and most importantly, Ummong Patel is the store manager of the family store and he can answer operational questions that might arise. We do have the two minor modifications to deal with and we well understand what our responsibilities are, our burdens are. And the first one, of course, is the ask to the council to accept the cross-access easement in lieu of a physical construction of the stub. The tract, or tracks actually, two lots. The one adjacent to South Maynard has a frontage of a hundred and eight feet along South Maynard. And that has point two nine acres stacked. On top of that, adjacent to it, is a smaller tract, slightly smaller, point two, three acres. The first one is owned by a Cooper Family LLC and the second one is owned by Cooper Family members as joint owners. What I'd like to do at this time is ask that Chad Simmons, our project leader, come around and we'll proceed forward with our commentary on the first minor modification. Chad, please.
Good evening. My name is Chad Simmons. I'm a registered North Carolina professional engineer and project manager for Triangle Civil Works, P.A. I have nineteen years of experience in surveying and site civil design in the Triangle area. I graduated with a bachelor's science degree in civil engineering from North Carolina State University. Thank you.
Focusing on the first matter modification in connection with the matter of the stub versus the access easement, would you please explain and testify the background of how this came to pass and the reasons for it?
Well, we were required by the LDO to provide a paved stubout, as Mr. Hales has mentioned. We looked at doing that stubout, but due to the closeness of the location of the existing warehouse along that property line, we could not provide a paved stubout that would not disturb the earth around that warehouse. And actually, maintaining a three to one slope through there, if we push that out to the proposed property line, those grades would tie within the footprint of that existing warehouse. However, at staff's direction, we provided a cross-access easement there for any future connection pending future development. So that's where we are today.
And the width of that cross-access easement is what, please sir?
Thirty-two feet.
Okay. And would you, just to clarify the matter of, to which Mr. Hales has testified, the matter of the rise in that property, the topographic rise from Southeast Maynard, which you've had to contend with in trying to work that stubout?
Sure. We actually put max slope on this drive. The existing topo falls dramatically from that warehouse down to a low area just off of Maynard. Due to that dramatic rise and trying to reduce our impact and grading, we put a maximum slope of around nine percent on that driveway. Even with that nine percent grade, it ties back that back slope off a proposed stubout into that building. So I feel like we've done everything we can as far as adjusting the vertical grade there to minimize our impact.
Okay. And while the graphic is there, you might comment on your adjacencies as far as your type C to the south and your type C apart, or your type C to the east and north?
Sure. In lieu of that, we are, providing that stubout, we are going to go ahead and fully plant those buffers and preserve existing plantings within those buffers. Specifically in the region of that missing stubout, there is no existing vegetation there adjacent to the warehouse so we are planting that in accordance with the type C buffer standards.
But it is a fact, at such a time, if a vehicular connection does become a reality, on a reuse and the warehouse goes away, that those particular landscaping items would have to be removed.
That's correct.
In deference to the connection. Okay. Do you have anything else that you'd like to share with the council in connection with the first minor modification?
There is one other thing. The question number three in the criteria references bicycle and pedestrian connections provided between developments, adjacent developments or land uses. Pedestrian access is provided to the Cooper Furniture Store and that property through existing sidewalks on Southeast Maynard and Chatham Street. Bicycle access is also provided by way of Maynard and Chatham Street.
If I may, I don't want to make this disjointed, but would Carter Crawford come around, please? Carter, with that graphic up there, first identify yourself and a bit of your background.
My name's Carter Crawford. I live in Raleigh. Graduated from N.C. State College of Design in nineteen eighty-five with an M.L.A. And more recently with a PhD in design. Been a registered landscape architect since nineteen eighty-eight.
Okay. And you are the team member charged with responsibility for primarily, primary responsibility in connection with our plantings, our buffers, is that correct?
That's right.
Would you please describe to the council your, the theory of how you handled these buffers? And also, I think we have a champion tree that you have made every effort to protect.
That's correct. We have, along the southern property line and the eastern property line, planted to achieve the twenty-foot or ten-foot type C buffers according to code, except where there was existing vegetation that was sufficient to meet that standard. We have also said that in those areas where there are plants that are, where there are dead or incitely limbs, we're gonna remove those to make things look better, but we're not gonna remove any live trees. And we did achieve our, all of our objectives and create this site plan while preserving the one champion tree that's on site.
Okay. Now, if I may, direct your attention to our proposed streetscape buffer along Southeast Maynard. And would you please give the, your theory, the background of your approach there?
Along that right of way, because the existing building is, is within the space that would be required for the normal streetscape buffer, we are unable to provide the width that the buffer requires. What we have done is every square inch of land area that we could take out impervious surface, we have done so and replaced it with landscaping. And that includes as much screening as we can get between the sidewalk and the existing drive that serves the side loading dock and five street trees, which, actually six street trees, which are not spaced according to the requirements of the streetscape buffer, but the numbers are there.
And so you're going to oversee the removal of actual concrete, is that correct? In order to achieve this green space?
That's right. We're gonna be taking out pavement in order to achieve the green space.
I have no further questions at this time. Ask Mr. Chad Simmons to come back around, please. I'd like to direct your attention to the second matter, modification. Requested the town council approve a reduction in the streetscape width from thirty feet to eight feet on Southeast Maynard Road. Would you please give the background for that?
Sure.
And the positive effects of this as far as the overall prospective operation of the Patel Brothers?
Sure. Just a little bit of background about our project approach here. One of the things that we were tasked with was coming up with a safer way to get service trucks to make their deliveries to the Patel store. Currently, if you'll look back at Mr. Hales's photographs, you can see the truck parked actually in the Maynard right of way to make his deliveries. When that truck approaches from the south along Maynard, it uses that existing driveway in the middle of the building that we're currently proposing to close to access that delivery aisle. When it does that, it creates a dangerous pedestrian vehicle interaction there with the sidewalk because that truck is all over that existing sidewalk just to get into that space. When he leaves, he creates another dangerous interaction at the other drive. If he chooses to go that way again, the truck is all over the sidewalk. Or if he tries to go back out the driveway he came in, he's restricted to only be able to go north on Maynard and again, he's all over that existing sidewalk. So our goal was to create a situation where that truck could access the facility and eliminate those dangerous interactions with pedestrians. Specifically responding to the criteria before you for the minor modification, we believe that the thirty-foot setback reduction to eight feet advances the goals of the LDO by creating a visual separation, a landscape separation between the use and the public street. That reduced streetscape relieves practical difficulties in developing our site. Our goal here tonight is to show you these practical difficulties that we face and try to explain those to you. The, again, the practical difficulties are locating the facilities that the Patels need close enough at their service entrance, at their service doors, to be able to practically serve that, requiring that reduction in streetscape. Alternatives were examined, specifically the dumpster location. Alternative one was to put the dumpster across the drive from the shop. That would result in an impact into the twenty-foot type C buffer and would create a dangerous interaction between a store employee bringing refuse out to that dumpster as cars might be using that driveway. The second place we looked at was to the east of the proposed truck dock. In this area, that would have caused a disturbance to the champion tree that's located right here on the corner. So we looked at those and really found that dumpster location is the best location, the safest location and the least impactful location. The last criteria was, does meeting the required width prevent reasonable use of the property based on zoning? One of the things that we looked at was what would track two look like under the current land development code? Track two in the, in the plans is this track right here, currently on its own. And when we laid out the required buffers and required right of way dedication and required streetscape yard, it resulted in about a tenth of the land left over for development out of a total of three tenths of an acre. So about thirty-three percent or a third of the original land was available for development. So about 33%, or a third of the original land, was available for development. It's our opinion that this land is best developed as an accessory, not accessory use, but an adjoining use to the Patel shops.
Again, what is that solid bar in part of the driveway? Is that a pedestrian safety item that you've, if I may, further?
Right here.
There you go.
Okay. One of the ways that we wanted to further improve safety, that we were required by staff to improve safety and it helps out the site too, is providing, is by providing a stop condition here. So there's a stop bar here out of this driveway facing Maynard and a stop sign and a striped pedestrian crosswalk connecting the existing sidewalk across the proposed drive.
And right now, under the present condition, as far as the patrons of our grocery store, tell the council about the interaction between our pedestrian patrons and the entrance to the store that will now be dramatically improved by the proposed change.
Pedestrian access to the front of the store is still here. There's no longer any expected delivery truck pedestrian interaction. I would imagine the delivery truck driver would get an earful from Uman if he tried to drive in here. And so that interaction has been greatly limited. We can't prevent a driver from inadvertently driving in there, but we've given him an option to separate, separate his actions from the customers and pedestrians. And I noticed Mr. Hales said that this was on a transit line as well. I would assume there's going to be pedestrians coming off that transit line to access the store. So that's, we're dealing with pedestrians in this area, so we want to be as safe as possible.
Okay. If I may. Oh, Chris, come around, please. If you would just stand down for just a second, I'm going to be back with you.
Hi, I'm Krista Green. I work for StanTech Consulting as a senior traffic engineer. I have 23 years of experience. I have my undergraduate and master's degrees in civil engineering with a concentration in transportation from NC State. Been a PE since 1995, and I'm dating myself, so I hate giving my credentials.
It's something that I want to be sure they know you're an expert. I know you're an expert, I want to be sure. You have examined then the present existing conditions plan and you have examined the proposed, is that correct?
Yes, I have.
And do you have professional opinion as to the, well, just testify if you would to the improvements that you see in prospect with the proposed new plan?
I feel like relocating the driveway behind the store, as y'all have seen, is going to provide a much safer traffic pattern. It also gives you more distance between the intersection and where the relocated driveway is going to be, too.
So you think that there will be an enhancement?
Yes, this is a very, this is a great improvement.
Vehicular enhancement and?
Yes. And for the pedestrians, too.
Okay. No further questions.
Thank you.
Come around, Mr. Simmons, please. I hate to wear you out, but you're young. You're young and strong. Okay. If we may move into the criteria now.
Sure.
Chad, number two, does the plan adequately protect other property, there's no residential uses on this property, from potential adverse effects of the proposed development?
Like you said, there are no residential uses on the property. There are no residential uses on any of the adjacent properties or across the street from this property. The adjacent properties are protected from any adverse effects by the presence of the proposed buffers that you see there on your screen.
To which you've already testified.
Correct, and Carter as well.
Okay. Moving on to number three, criteria number three, does the plan provide harmony and unity with development of nearby properties?
In my professional opinion, it does. A reduced streetscape width is consistent with the existing developments along southeast Maynard in the vicinity of the Patel Brothers Grocery, where a little landscape yard exists between the surface parking lots and the Maynard sidewalk. They vary in width anywhere from two feet to 10 feet.
Larger portion of the south line of the proposed new project is owned by Big Dog Rover LLC, and Mr. Hales has indicated that that's an automobile agency. Did they provide, at the time it was developed, gosh knows when, any sort of buffer at all along that line?
No, they did not. There's not an existing buffer on that parcel. We are dedicating the full 20-foot width buffer in this location instead of doing a shared 20-foot buffer.
Any other comments about our harmony and unity with development of our nearby properties?
Sure. I believe as Mr. Hales already mentioned, too, the uses in the neighborhood are commercial in nature. The auto service establishment to the south, to the southeast, there is a multi-use commercial building. And as you know, to the east is the Cooper Family Furniture Store with existing warehousing facilities.
And so there on our, what would be our southeast corner, Dogwood Asset has an ownership there, they actually have vehicular loading or storefront loading on the rear there, don't they?
Correct. They also have a service, service access to the rear of that building as well.
And no, no buffer was provided in conjunction with the development of that lot, is that correct?
Not in our research. We couldn't find an existing buffer there.
Okay, so we're providing that. Okay. Any other comments on number three?
No, that's all.
Okay. Number four, does the plan provide safe conditions for pedestrians or motors and prevent a dangerous arrangement of pedestrian and vehicular ways? You've already testified, I think, to a certain extent, but you want to?
Sure. Just, just real quick, in the existing condition, there are dangerous vehicle, delivery vehicle, pedestrian interactions at the existing drives. We're proposing to close one of those drives and remove the service vehicles to the rear of the store to limit those interactions.
Does the plan, number five, does the plan provide safe ingress and egress for emergency surfaces to the site?
Emergency services access to the front of the Patel Grocery would not be impacted. That would remain in place through this existing drive, and emergency services access to the rear of the store would be improved through the new driveway.
And number six, does the plan provide mitigation for traffic congestion impacts reasonably expected to be generated by the project?
In the existing condition, with this truck parked in the right-of-way on the delivery aisle, for them to make an exit maneuver, they need to make a over-the-shoulder look for oncoming traffic. And that's not the most efficient way to look for oncoming traffic. Slows down his reaction time, his or her reaction time, and in our opinion provides or creates a dangerous situation. In this condition, in the proposed condition, the delivery truck driver is parked right here in this stall. He or she pulls out and is able to access Maynard in as near a perpendicular fashion as possible, where they've got a much better range of view of oncoming traffic in either direction. In this condition, they can turn right or left as they need to.
In the proposed plan, is there additional capacity for another semi or box truck while that one is at the dock?
There is. As exists, with this driveway here open, if there is a delivery truck in this delivery aisle and a second approaches, it must wait either out here in Maynard Road or it must go wait somewhere else until that delivery truck leaves. In the proposed condition, if there is an existing delivery truck parked in the stall, a second delivery truck may pull into the driveway and park in the same position that the first truck accessed that driveway and wait for that truck to make its offload. After that truck leaves, the second truck may back into the stall.
And it's just, I don't want to gild the lily, but is there an opportunity for a box truck? We've heard testimony that we do have those deliveries to come in also while the semis are there.
Sure. There's an existing service ramp here and service door. What we've done is preserved as narrow a portion of existing concrete as we dare to allow a bread truck-type vehicle to access that aisle and offload its deliveries and not clog up this area here, if there's an existing truck here. We want to preserve access to that existing service ramp and service door.
Any other comments on, on criteria number six?
Not at this time.
Okay. Briefly, in connection with criteria number five, well, number four is, does it provide safe conditions for pedestrians or motors and prevent a dangerous arrangement of pedestrian vehicular ways? And your testimony is?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And number five, does the plan provide safe ingress and egress for emergency services to the site?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And finally, does the plan provide mitigation for traffic congestion impacts reasonably expected to be generated by the project?
And yes, and this is great because it's your second project tonight that generates no new traffic, too.
That's right. Thank you very much. Okay. I'd like to move into the record, please, the staff report and also all applicable requirements of the ordinances of the town that are applied to this particular case. And that concludes our testimony at this time, Mr. Mayor and councilors, but we have a full team here, so we're ready for questions.
Okay, very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, I'll invite any other speakers who've been sworn in who would like to speak in support of the application to approach the podium. Seeing none, we'll move along. Anyone like to cross-examine any witnesses who testified in support of the request? Seeing no one, open up the hearing to those who are opposed to the request. I would ask that you approach the podium. Seeing none, moving right along. Town staff have any testimony they wish to add?
We do not.
Okay. And is there anyone in the audience who has any sworn, anyone, is there anyone that's sworn in have any objections to the incompetency of the evidence or to the testimony? All right. Moving now to any evidence that warrants the continuance of this hearing. Okay. Finally, deliberative phase of the meeting, opening up the council members. Questions, comments?
Well, I just have one question. Staff, can you tell me why it's a type C buffer? We rarely see type Cs. Why not an A or a B?
Type Cs are typically required between adjacent commercial uses.
Okay.
Like any shopping center, you have 10-foot.
Okay, so because we're seeing typically residential requests, that's why we're usually getting As or Bs?
Correct.
Okay.
Great plan to improve the appearance along that street. But let me ask a question, and maybe the picture is misleading, but along southeast Maynard Road, the current sidewalk, as you're looking, I guess it's south, so if you can go to that slide that shows the automotive place in the back with those few pine trees and everything, it has a good shot of the sidewalk. Yeah, there you go. Thank you. It may just be the way the picture is made, but since that's part of the applicant's streetscape, is, are there any needed improvements to that sidewalk? It looks uneven, it looks broken, maybe it's not. Maybe it's just the way it looks. And I hate to ask them to do one more thing, because my goodness, they're doing so much. But I was just curious about the safety of that sidewalk, particularly for folks who may be riding a bike on it.
As part of the site inspection associated with their improvements, we'll make sure the site, the sidewalk is in?
Good shape.
Finished condition when they occupy the space.
I, too, would agree with Ms. Adcock. Drive by this site pretty much daily. Y'all may, you have done, worked wonders with the site already. I remember when it was the old grocery boy gas station and seeing it actually transform and become the Patel Brothers Grocery has been a really neat experience. Y'all have done wonders to the site, you're making it even better. I've seen the truck parked there making deliveries on the sidewalk and stuff. It's, this will be a huge improvement to the area and also to public safety and pedestrian safety. Best of luck.
Okay. Other comments, questions?
I just, I love the fact that you worked hard to make the landscaping around the champion trees. We've had so many of these champion trees come up. I'll speak, Ms. Adcock normally speaks for the trees here, but I have to say, I was, I was so interested that while we were here, I was trying to find which champion tree it was on the original one before you pointed it out. So thank you for doing that effort. And if you want, I can go ahead and make a motion.
Well, we'll get, Mr. Hales walks through the motion after we close the comment period. Mr. Hales?
If you're ready.
Okay.
It's fairly straightforward, it's just like the last one. The only thing I'll point out, the same minor modification approval criteria is in worksheet one. And the applicant did speak to the additional approval criteria for minor modification one, are appropriate bicycle and pedestrian connections provided between the adjacent developments or land uses. And then for the streetscape production, does meeting the required with prohibit reasonable use of the property based on the zoning. So please take those into consideration.
Okay. So for the reasons discussed, I mean that we approve the minor modification request made by the applicant as the request meet all the approval criteria, section 3.19.1, 7.10.3C, and 7.2.5C of the LDO.
Second. There's a motion and a second discussion.
Yes.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, motion carries unanimously. And if everything's in order, I'll close the public hearing.
Well, there's one more. Motion to approve this subdivision and site plan for the reasons discussed, I mean that we approve the proposed subdivision and site plan with conditions as stated below as it meets all the approval criteria set of section 3.9.2I. This approval is conditioned upon the following, that the applicant must satisfactorily address any remaining development review committee comments on the master plan set submitted for signature.
Second. Motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, motion carries unanimously. Everything in order?
Sure.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Is there any other business? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose, we are adjourned. Thank you.
That's right.
Visit the Town of Keri website at townofkeri.org.